I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The warrants have all been signed. Anybody note any ergo admissions in the March first selectmen meeting minutes?
I didn't see any, but I could have missed something. I'm making motion we pass it as approved, as approved.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve. The March first selectmen minutes, all those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. I don't know if there would be any adjustments to the agenda. I don't know of any.
Amy said if you want to postpone some of the budgets after the next meeting, she's okay with that.
Some, some things we might, some things we might just zip through.
Right.
But we'll see. Any announcements? Public comment? Okay, business agenda. I guess we'll start with the fire department if we can find it.
I think it's the last.
It's the last one, I'm pretty sure.
I believe Amy told me that she wishes, looks like she did, increase the fuel and oil budget by three thousand dollars.
When I talked to her the last week, you know, like she said, you think we ought to go up to six dollars? And I said, there's already a few places that the diesel's already five sixty, five seventy in that like day. So I said, be on the safe side, go to eight dollars. In that like, because who knows where it's gonna end up at?
I don't know, but anyway.
And who knows, we might be low at that. And the other thing in that like was salaries, wages. We went up, hopefully if the town passes that town meeting time in that like, that's all. We're gonna get a pay increase for calls and trainings.
And I see she doesn't, we really don't have anything to break that down, so we really don't know what we're looking at.
On the wages in that like there, we're right now, I think we're twelve and fifteen.
We's going up to fifteen and nineteen, is that what?
I think sixteen and nineteen is what we've talked. But, I mean, fourteen and seventeen, fifteen and eighteen.
It would be nice, I guess, if we had some of that information.
Yeah.
We don't know what, like the offices are gonna, like the chief and captain.
We're going up five hundred dollars on that from.
From five thousand to five?
Fifty, yeah. And if the train is office of a thousand, they're gonna get fifteen hundred. If safety office a thousand, they're gonna get fifteen hundred if the, like that.
You guys feel comfortable, or would you rather see this all in writing before we? I mean, I don't.
I've been a little close to it, so I'm like, I don't have a problem with what we've got here, but, but I'm not done one person out of three.
Well, I have a little, you know, it's kinda hard for me to sit here and kind of bode on the fire department when I'm a member, so. I mean, the other one is probably, if you would rather look at some of these figures that.
I guess I would just like to see the figure, so if asked about it, we can, like, have a for sure answer, you know, if somebody asks me, like, what do they get paid? I don't wanna be like, oh, I think it might be, you know, I just wanna be able to answer any questions.
Yeah, right.
Right. I know here on the increase in Alec was based on sixteen and nineteen.
Right.
In Alec, and then the five hundred dollars on top of the.
Yeah, I just, um, I guess I would just would feel better if we had, like, the breakdown of it. I mean, I'm, I'm totally good with increasing the pay, you know, we talked about it last time, and I do think it's a smart thing, but I guess I would just.
Increase of twelve, thirteen thousand, so.
Yeah.
I guess that's really not a lot, but.
Well, I'll tell you right now, in that like there, normally we average around eighty, eighty-two calls a year, and I think one more will make fifty already since the first of the year.
No, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the fact that, that we should definitely increase the budget, I just would like to have
Yes.
more details, that's all. I mean, I, I definitely agree with the numbers that you're throwing out, but I just like to see it, so I know what I'm. So. Maybe that one should be put off for, till the next time.
I mean, if I, like you said, the gas and oil is gonna be a
Yeah.
Right.
Catchy one, and even the heat's gonna be, you don't know what the heating oil's gonna do.
Well, C and D gets another price increase in that like there, or whatever, in that like there. It goes from twelve, eleven cents to fifteen cents, I mean, that's, we're gonna be off April on all the town buildings.
Right.
Right, because I mean, it was a shock, and my bill ain't that much, it's usually thirty dollars a year. And when I got a bill for fifty-nine dollars at the first of January in that like, I said, I must not paid last month's bill, and I looked, well, no, I paid it, and then I got looked, and then they went from six cents to eleven cents, so. So that would double your cost.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we probably in some ways kinda wasted your time. But, um, I guess, you know, it would be better for us to see the numbers, and like I said, and that way, if we have, anybody asks us questions, we will.
Oh, it's probably their Amy's paperwork at some place, but.
I'm sure.
Yep, because I know I was in, like I said, last week there in that like there, and told her what we talked about, like Monday night's fireman's meeting and stuff, and she said she'd work up the figures and toss them in and in that like there, but like she said, six dollars on diesel, and I said, you might as well go up to eight, if you're on the safe side, because it's already six months.
Right, yeah.
The other thing that I would like to see is, like, we go to Grafton, or we go to Riley, and they can, the county, the county pays us a a flat fee for taking care of that, but I'd like to see that fee stay with the fire department rather than go in the general account. You could put it in la, in the wages, or not add it to it, but that, that money really should stay with it, but something for the fire department.
Go back into the fire department's budget for something, whether it's offset in fuel, or
Yeah.
wages, or equipment, or maintenance, or.
Yeah, it's not a lot of money, I think it's like sixteen hundred, I think from both, but I'm not sure, I'm not positive on that, but it's around that.
Because Albany, Mason Town.
There again, that's hard for us to discuss that, because she's not.
I know, but I mean, it's something that.
We can make a notes and.
She does have it down to possibly have a meeting on March twenty ninth.
Because we, uh, I mean, it's costing the town money to go to Grafton, do a car accident, at least, the money would be coming back.
My suggestion would be is ask Loretta and see what Bethel gets from Albany, Mason Township, I know they get a lot more residents and stuff.
They get a lot more money than we do, but we don't have the residents.
Right.
We probably got maybe twenty-five residents, if that, in the two towns.
Yeah, we only got that, we got four, four or five.
Yeah, anyway. But when we end up with the carryouts in Grafton for the five hours.
That's the thing right there.
And, and accidents when the road's blocked for four, five hours, three hours, two hours, or whatever, you know?
But I don't, I don't think the carryouts would go through the county with it.
Well, there's some, some things go through the carry, and some things they don't.
Yeah, the county gives us a flat rate stipend, it's for the.
Right, for car accidents and.
Well, no, it's.
Doesn't matter what it is.
For the year, for the year, they give us a stipend for that.
To come with Grafton and probably Riley.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. So I don't think they really broke it down into
No, but just.
What it is, it's just.
Back along, it's been going into the general account, if I'm not mistaken, I've checked on that, I believe it was.
Yeah, well, but there again, that's the answer, that's the question for Amy, and I think we are probably gonna meet again next, on the twenty-ninth or whatever it was, to do some more of this, if that works for everybody, but. So I guess we might have probably wasted your time, Alan, but, you know, to be on the safe side, and people really wanna look at the numbers.
Well, I'm retiring tomorrow, so I'm taking my pension. Joelyne said she wanted to be chief, and I said, no problem.
Nope.
All right, well, I just had you down here for us, so that if you didn't wanna stay and hash out some other stuff, I guess you didn't have to, but.
Yeah.
Forest Fire, anything on that? That's usually just where we've set money aside in cases of big one. There shouldn't be any prices on that.
Well, I did see it in there.
Yeah, it's towards the bottom, it's five thousand dollars.
I think it's the same thing that has always been.
Yeah, I just saw it on the agenda, that's why I was asking.
I know when I talked to the State Forest Service in Alec, if we have a woods fire here in town with our valuation is so high, it's gotta be like twenty-three percent of our budget in Alec before they'll kick in and with any money, so if we got a five hundred million dollar, we need a, like a two hundred and fifty million dollar fire before they'll put in money. So hopefully half dozen of the condos go up in flames in the process, and there were reversals.
My woods fire.
And forest fire reserve is has an effort to reserve funds in case of a forest fire, we have budgeted five thousand dollars, which we have done over the last few years, so let's stay the same, so I would say that we keep that.
I don't have a problem, I just, just saw it on the agenda, and while that one was here, I just wanted to bring it out there as well.
The good thing is, is we got mutually with the other towns, and
Yeah.
who've gone to more fires in other towns, and they've come here, so.
And if we go out of town, get to unorganized areas, the state picks up the debt on those anyway.
So we think that one is just.
We put that one in the way it is, and like I said.
It seems pretty, seems pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
Once we go through these, we'll just, you know, eventually we will.
All right, what are we going to next?
Well, I was gonna go to administration, but there again on that one, I think we will table that one until Amy comes back, because I know we're all gonna have questions on that. And I think we probably ought to wait on that until after the executive session anyway, to see what's going on with that.
About the quick claim deed there, is that something we got?
Well, we haven't got that far yet.
Okay, well, no, I was just going, doing. Highway was, I think this is the last year for the, next year. I think it's probably the other business, this is the last year for that.
So we're skipping administration until after, till later, right, is that what we're?
Oh, I'm gonna say that probably we will wait until Amy comes back on that one, but.
I think that's a good idea. And probably the same for the insurance as well.
Well, the insurance, we probably don't, I don't think we have.
We don't have much control over that.
Well, we don't, but I mean, there again, there's no, there's no numbers that show us anything.
That's right.
You know, what it, what it was last year and what it is, yeah, it's going down, but that's because probably David retired.
Like.
I'm assuming.
County taxes, we don't have any much control over that one either.
All right now, I wanna go, well, the insurance, we will table that one. Because I think we still have a bunch of questions, or I do anyway, I don't know about the rest of you.
Yeah.
Have you got one of the last year's tax books to, when it's up to see some of the?
Alan, didn't you, I've just, something to bring up on highway, but you said something about you needed to rent something to cut brush with?
Little more, like hundred horse tractor that.
Yeah, I know what they are, I just, you had spoken of that one time before.
Yeah, there's a lot of overhanging limbs and stuff on those sides of the roads now, and my arms ain't gonna say go out there to pull some stuff.
Don't worry, one blew off at my house the other day.
That's a stage.
Big ding in my garage.
Let's do this on the last year's.
Didn't, didn't you say that, um, Greenwood and Woodstock, they have one in some.
Woodstock, Bethel rented one this past fall.
So I mean, we had the numbers that might be, um.
Well, we need to add them somewhere for our two something.
All right, well, we're not on highways yet.
No, we're not, but I just remembered Alan saying that, that's why I brought it up, so we remember bring it up when it comes behind.
Okay, we'll go on boards and committees.
I think that one we need to table, because it was talking about increasing that a little bit, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, but she has that listed in here.
All right, the planning board, I think it's going up to fifteen hundred each. It were a thousand, school board is gonna go from, what, a thousand to fifty? Appeals board, um, they pay seven fifty, but I think that's only if, if they do have a call, I mean.
Yeah, so seven fifty each if needed.
So. The health officer, I don't think that went up any. I think that stayed the same.
Health officer is actually the permanent inspector.
I was gonna say, isn't that me?
Yeah.
I don't get a hundred dollars for that.
Uh, then there is eight hundred dollars for any trainings. Fifty-seven hundred is for planning services for the planning board. Boards agree for one percent decrease. So I think everything is, even with the raises, that's budgeted in there with less than last year. So I think this would be all right, I mean, this is, we're all, we're gonna come back and look at all these again, depending on what our final numbers are. So whether we wanna add something later, or do not something.
Right, adjust it.
I think this one's all right.
I, I agree, I think we can put a check next to this one for now.
County taxes.
Do, do we get much say in that?
Oh, we really don't.
They send us a bill, we pay it.
And every year it goes up. So is this actually what, we're gonna get billed this year?
I believe that's what she said, is that that's what the county's saying.
So five percent increase over last year, so. So I guess that's really nothing we can really do about it.
Right, I don't think they're up for negotiations.
The highway budget. Are we sure that this is what Cross is gonna charge us for winter roads, or we'd have to go back out?
I think this is the last year of contract, because I asked that question, and she told me it was.
Goes out to contract for twenty-four.
Next year.
All right, so that should all.
It's all, I don't know how that was, that sometimes is an increase, but.
I've gotta figure out the fuel increase for him.
Yeah, if there was an escalation clause in his contract.
Well, that might be.
Even, even if the fuel prices don't drop, it's still gonna be high.
That's something that he's gonna probably have to come back and talk to us about that, but I mean, yes, you are right, I mean.
Should we wait for Amy on this, just to make sure, so we can look at the contract and
Right, I mean, because the price, his cost is gonna go up, because it's gonna cost him more to do it.
Right.
I think he had, he had part of that built into the three-year contract, but.
Well, that would be something that we need to look at.
Yeah, what the contract says, as it is.
So I think we should hold off on that one, or Joelle has to come back right there.
Table it for a second, I'll give it a quick read.
And the other thing is, we may wanna check into renting one of those.
Which kind of?
Which kind of, yeah. People can get up and, you know, really make a mess, or whatever, it don't look too good for the first two, three years.
Well, I think, like, we ain't got a whole lot of collards in places. I think you reach in close to the tree, just knife the thing off, and let it fall, and then just chuck it into the bushes the next day or whatever, if it ain't laying in the road. And not sit there and just take it and grind it right in, and now you just shred it, and just rip it and throw it everywheres, and that's, that's, that's the isolate.
The little stuff off the edges, huh?
Right, that's the isolate in that like there, because when they went by my house and did it there fifteen years ago, there, half of the lawn was shredded, with all the debris coming across the road and.
So I think, well, I don't, I don't found anything in there at all.
Not yet. I haven't seen any escalation clause.
I don't think they had one, if I can remember right.
This might be something that we'll want to come back and talk.
Well, especially if we wanna look into renting, or whatever it's called, for the brush on the side of the road.
Usually it's
Who?
A hundred horse tractor roughly, in that like there.
It's usually, you rent it by the day of the week or whatever.
Yeah, usually they, it's weekly now, but I think two to three days will get everything in town that needs to be done will be done, unless it's got a small head.
What do you rent it for then?
Um, I ain't sure who does it, I don't know if it holds the seams, or.
I think Caterpillar has some, some of the dealers have them, but they rent out.
I mean, I actually got a little one, it's only a fourteen footer with a thirty-inch head on it, and I did a little for Gillian six or eight years ago, and that like, and he wants to get everything, so I did like a mile in a day, but I mean, but the bigger ones has got the four and a half, five foot, six foot head on them, and that like there, well, you cover a lot of ground.
Right.
The only thing I can see, well, one thing I can see that probably would be against it is, we don't have a highway department. So I mean, we, and are we gonna, I don't know how that works, would we, if we rented it out, and hired Alan to use it, or Dean to use it, or what, what our liability would be, you know, I mean, we must have to have some type of insurance for that.
I think when you rent a machine, you rent the insurance, if I make a guess.
I mean, but that's something we, we can check into. That's something that, again.
I know some, some had one there last fall for a while, I don't think they did all their roads with it, I think they're probably gonna have it again sometime this year. Maybe I'll swing over to the highway department, catch up with him, see. I know there's a lot, lot more people are starting, or a lot more companies are starting to rent those things out, because they're starting to use them a lot on the logging roads too.
Yeah.
Before the brush gets big enough that they have to go to the bigger hot saw, they go into those and just.
Right.
And when it gets really bad, they go in with a excavator that's got a grinding head on it. They reach up as high as they can, and they just grind it down to come out in little pieces.
So maybe we should write that down, that we wanna come back to the highway and look into this rental thing, buy it out what we need, yeah.
Next time.
Yeah.
And then that way they will have time to look into that, and.
I do not see an escalation clause in the contract, but like you said,
Right.
he definitely could certainly come and petition for your kindness.
We get one at three fifty for two or three or four years on diesel, and that's only six bucks.
Right.
What, two weeks, three weeks, yeah, the price is the same?
I think the municipal building budget may have to wait too, because I think, um.
That might be something that we get as.
Well, they're, considering there's blank spaces in there.
I, I'm, I'm supposed to be meeting with Western Main Supply to get a quote on replacing all their windows. That's one of the numbers we're waiting for.
Right, so that's one thing we don't have.
Right.
Going now, that was out the bid, right?
We did it to bid for one year.
Right, so.
That's why I asked Amy what you want, what we wanted to do.
Oh, I would think we do, went out the bid before, and it was just for last year, I don't know.
We did it for one year because she had already told Charlie Bean that he could have the cemetery, so the cemetery has to go to bid, and the town property.
Right, so I mean, that's something, and so that's gonna be kinda hard to figure, because you don't know what everybody's gonna bid. And then it's probably gonna go up, because
Everything.
Gas and fuel prices going up. So I, I would think that probably we will wait on that one as well, so we can decide whether it's really, you know, gonna make it, put it back out to bid, and.
Well, that, and we have to wait for the numbers from Western Main for the
Yeah.
window replacement and such, because there's, you know, a blank spot in there.
I guess that takes care of the budget items pretty quick, I mean, we didn't, we didn't say okay to many of them.
Well, we did a couple, two, three.
Three.
Boards and committees, county tax, and forest fire.
Yeah.
Like I said, we do what we felt comfortable doing, and
Right.
you know, anything that we really have questions about, then I guess we will wait. Discuss and consider signing quick claim deed three sixteen D at the command summit zero. Sarah Scholes.
Scholes.
There you go.
Amy's gonna say that.
Right, this is something that we did talk about before, and we, we have got the quick claim deed now, um.
I think we voted that we would sign it, if I'm not mistaken, but it's just a matter of doing it, I believe.
So I make the motion that we sign the quick claim deed for unit three sixteen D to Sarah Scholes.
Now, this is also the one that they had, she has the favor. The back taxes and stuff.
Oh, she already did.
She already did.
Everything's all set, we're just waiting on this.
Absolutely.
I'll second that, if we needed a motion, but I think we already did that.
Well, now we've run it twice.
Yeah.
It moved a second, that we sign the quick claim deed for Sarah Scholes. All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Discuss and consider signing quick claim deed for Brian LaBretia.
So all of that taxes are paid, um, we've already committed, paid it up to date. So we're gonna quit claiming it back to Brian, so he can sell it to you.
So, but everything is like?
Everything's zeroed out, yeah, everything's paid in full. And I'm just waiting for this, so I can send the registered report.
Make a motion, we accept the give the quick claim deed back to Brian LaBretia, because everything is paid up.
I will second the motion.
Booted second is that we sign the quick claim deed for Brian LaBretia, all those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. In favor.
You have a chance, read exhibit here.
Well, that's kind of, it's two different laws, and, well, now some of that ain't right, because it's, well, it's keep.
I like how it's like fall, it's been fine.
Thirty minutes west to ten.
Well, that's, that's just the way they used to lay up the.
To a spruce. To a spruce, oh my.
Spruce tree that probably died.
I had to have her double the, I had to double it.
The big rock and then the yellow birch tree.
To a stake in the ground, we're like, oh my, it was good, twenty minutes west.
Discuss and consider a special board meeting to finish first review of physical twenty-three budget, March twenty-nine. Everybody can make that meeting?
That's not this next Tuesday, the one after, right? Okay, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
Twenty-nine.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think that's Ann's birthday.
That's the week, I have three meetings in a row.
Well, you better write them all down, and you better buy a birthday card.
Yeah, well, no. I get a bouquet of the Tootsie Roll lollipop, she loves them.
There you go.
So, one good one, meeting on the twenty-nine.
Yeah, twenty-ninth at five o'clock, yeah.
Yeah.
And the next one, discuss and consider reviewing personnel policy by section, we was gonna do three and four. Do we wanna table that until she's here, or?
Um.
Do we wanna have that?
It's like my coffee, you, I forgot that.
I sort of feel like it's a little unfair if we do it without her, but.
Let's table it.
You all right with table, is it?
Yep.
We'll table, I don't, and it probably won't be, I don't, twenty-nine meeting probably, but we'll see where we're at.
Right, see how.
We're gonna add into this.
Yeah.
Extra stuff, so it'll probably be the first one in.
The first one in April.
So it will get pushed out a couple more, but, so we'll table the. Review on the personnel policy.
Did you skip the transfer station fee?
That's in the, yeah.
Oh, it's in the summaries, but it's not listed on the agenda.
See that. Eddie Skulu will be using the Grange Hall on March twenty-third from ten to two.
It's gonna be get thawed out, and he's gonna use it.
Yeah, you did that last meeting, as to adjust the transfer station thing.
They're using the Grange every week now, so.
He got thawed out, I'm sure.
Yeah, I got it, well, it's fixed, yeah.
Is there anything on the town administrative report that anybody wants to?
Everybody in the staff, so will the officer be closed on that particular day? Or is somebody not going, I'm just curious.
What day?
It doesn't have a day, it's, it just says the following, trainings, administrator. Let us legislate, legislative update, House Crown, CEO on MBO, day on three seventeen. There are, so those are the dates? Is that what four point five?
No, no, those are the.
Well, one one is three twenty-four.
Yep, one is the three twenty-four, um, but the other ones don't have dates, oh, they have different ones.
Well, one was the three seventeen, which would be already gone by, I guess.
Yeah, no, that's, um.
Three seventeen is on Thursday.
Yeah.
Are you going to a training on Thursday? I'm going to a training on Wednesday.
Actually, I don't think those, that must be the.
Tomorrow.
Those are numbers of the training thing.
Right, on the course or whatever.
There's different courses, and she's just letting you guys know that we're starting to sign up for them.
Okay. There's just, so those are not dates, what we're talking about?
I thought it was.
I think that, well, that's, that's three twenty-four dash.
No, it's yours is in April.
April?
Four, four, six, isn't it?
Four, five, or four, six, so those are dates?
Oh, yeah, they're in four, four, yeah.
Yeah.
Four, five, and four, six are, yes.
And then three twenty-four and three twenty-five, that was a date, right? That'd be Monday and Tuesday.
So that's the days, yeah, it could be.
Yeah, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I shouldn't do the dots, I'm sorry.
Could be March, next week, I don't think.
Okay. So yours must be a typo, is it MBOIA training?
Yes, it's for subsurface wastewater and internal plumbing.
So that's the.
That's tomorrow.
So that's on the sixteenth, not the seventeenth, okay. We just use dots instead of slashes, so that's why we're all very confused.
And I don't have anything in front of me, because there's nothing set out for the public, so. There's no agenda and no?
Oh, it didn't have any, I did, I'm part administrator and.
So, um. So this age-friendly community is presenting the donated benches to the town on June fourteenth, they will be at each polling place for public viewing. They would like to place one at the Verrever Grange Hall, they wanna put the bench at the Verrever Grange Hall?
Yeah.
Where?
Oh, where would you say to put it?
I just worry I get taken out.
Well, I think it's something about outside or.
About, by, wow.
But, brooks?
They can be moved to think that you set there.
Yes, uh, could you discuss the tri-town meeting?
I think that, that is the waste.
They didn't give us a date yet.
To be determined, they don't have a date yet.
It just says, is likely to be scheduled for next week, date has not been determined.
Yeah, but the tri-town, uh, what is that?
That, that's the waste.
Oh, okay, the waste.
The transfer station.
There's so many tri-towns. This Cunningham Communications, is that the?
The allowances, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
That's, because actually that went off the other day.
The setting.
The take your.
And we came in, and it wouldn't let me shut it off, it silenced it, but it wouldn't, you know, reset it, so they will be coming up the. I guess it's been a while, like, because these, this is the one that bothers, when it usually, when it goes off, is in this room. So that would be a good thing, but.
They have to do something with the census.
But that's also the J, that someone's gonna be gone, so you're gonna be here, Joelle?
I'm here on the twenty-fourth, is that a Thursday? I don't, I can't see that calendar, it's useless.
The twenty-fourth is a Monday.
It's a Monday, yeah, okay, I'll be there too.
They said they, you're not going to the training?
No, no, I'm going to a different training later.
All right, so as long as somebody's here, I mean, doesn't really matter, but.
Yeah.
I know in some of the senses we go to now, like, if a housefly lands on that, it trips it, because it blocks the.
The bees going through it, yeah.
Yes.
Technology, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the twenty-fourth is a Thursday, not a Monday, yeah.
It's a Thursday, yeah.
Really, the broadband committee didn't come back the way they really wanted it, I guess, was not favorable. They would like to meet with the boards jointly, so they'll have to come up with a date, and we'll see what happens. If we can make it or not make it. I don't know if we have any committee reports. It's like we have nothing anyone to report on, do they?
Joelle, you can have a report.
I have updates.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, when you're ready.
Well, I guess we're ready.
Okay, um, planning board and I have been looking at updating the U D R O ordinance for mineral extraction. That's it, we're not, there's different definitive language around that, and I think after our next planning board meeting, we'll be ready to bring that to you guys to look at. Um, if they want to, if they make that decision to move forward with it. Uh, I've also updated the U D R O application because of the, um, changes in that ordinance from last November. It's just taking me a while to find a document, we ended up having, we don't have it, it's a PDF, so we ended up using my laptop, converting it, getting it back, I mean, it was a mess. But we've got that updated, um, building code is gonna go to a land use and building code, because we don't enforce building codes, so we really don't have a building code ordinance. We have land use ordinance, so getting that language through planning board, and again, hopefully that goes through tomorrow night. And I'll be on your agenda in April, your first meeting in April to get that through you guys, if you like it, great, we'll put it on the.
And we'll have to have a.
Or.
Baking or anything?
Not, not for, not for building code, because that's not a zone order.
No, but I mean the.
The U D R O, if, if you guys choose to move forward with what they've worked on, yes, yeah, other than that, uh. If all the builders come in and have called me, actually pulled permits, I'm gonna be at a high-speed wobble for most of the summer, which is good.
It's a good thing, though.
It is a good thing, yeah. And, uh, Bethel passed his subsurface wastewater class, he's going to training with me tomorrow. I don't imagine it'll be a matter of weeks and Bethel will be on their own, Randy's sharp cookie, he's been studying and passing his courses quickly.
Who's it?
Randy Thurston, he lives out on Route five in Albany, he's a builder, I've known Randy for a couple of years now.
All right, if there's nothing else, I would say that we will adjourn a selectmen. Part of the meeting, and we will open up into executive session, M R S A, chapter thirteen, title one, four oh five, six A personnel.
Five thirty-nine, Amy.
To discuss grievances with office staff.
You just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Certainly.
They move the second that we adjourn the second, who knows, in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
So, for the record, can I get a schedule of the town meeting and when all of the, uh. You know, deadlines are for, because I can't find it, it's not on the website, website is pretty much down. So, can someone state to me when town meeting is?
May seventeen.
And when do the applications for any offices need to be in?
I think the selectmen was just, was on Facebook or somewhere, ain't it, April sixth or something?
Yeah.
Perhaps, you can take out papers now, I believe, and they have to be back on April sixth or tenth, or somewhere in there, don't quote me, but we will. Find that out and make sure you get it.
And what offices are up?
We do have two school boards.
Two school boards, we have a three year and one year for the school board.
And one selectman.
And one selectman.
And who's up this year? Cap there.
Not that anymore?
It's, that's a point at all.
All right.